Who are you?
I'm Chris.
Yeah. It's all.
Campbell's out.
Campbell's out?
Campbell is on chair.
Oh, he's out for the night.
He's out for the night.
Okay.
Are we ready to go? Okay, I am going to open the March 2019 City Planning Commission meeting. And can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Present.
Vice Chair Clifford.
Present.
Commissioner Kraske.
Here.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Present.
Okay, can we get a motion for the approval of the Order of Agenda? Oh, upskipping salute to the flag, I shouldn't do that. I'll lead the salute to the flag tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now moving on to approval of the Order of Agenda. Go ahead.
You go.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you make a motion to approve the agenda?
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Alrighty, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Okay, and that passes with four votes and one voter slightly delayed. And now, approval of the minutes for February 4th and March 4th. We can either take them separately or put them together?
Yes, and I just wanted to add that the minutes, the commission is not voting on the accuracy necessarily of the contents of the minutes, just that they are prepared for those meetings, and so the two new commissioners are free to act on the minutes. If you feel more comfortable not acting on the minutes, we can hold them to a future meeting.
Commissioner Kraske?
To make a motion to approve those minutes?
Okay, can I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote. All right. And there's no liaison needed for the City Council meeting? Okay. And that brings us to the part of the meeting that is for oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within its subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Do we have anybody that's interested in coming up and speaking? Seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close the oral communications. We do not have any consent items. We have no continued public hearings, so we're now into new public hearings. Can I get a staff report, please?
Senior Civil Engineer Raymond Donginis will provide the staff report for item number one.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Raymond Donginis, Senior Civil Engineer with Public Works. The City of Pacifica Planning Department is currently reviewing a development application for construction of a single-family residence in Odsted Way. In reviewing the Odsted Way development, staff identified property owned by three other owners in the vicinity that meets a requirement for lot merger. These properties are summarized in Table 1, page 28 in your packet. Under the provisions of the subdivision map act, government code, and Pacifico Municipal Code, the city is authorized to merge two or more contiguous parcels or units held by the owner if certain specified conditions are met. Staff conducted research and pursuant to Planning Department's staff review, the city engineer issued and recorded a notice of intention to determine status in accordance with the Pacifico Municipal Code to the four property owners. The municipal code provides that property owners may request a hearing before the Planning Commission within 30 days of the city's recordation of the notice where the property owners would have the opportunity to present any evidence that the affected property does not meet the requirements for merger. Two of the four property owners have requested a hearing before the Planning Commission. The municipal code specifies the noticing requirements for the affected property owners and requires that the city mail the notice of intention to determine status via certified mail to the record owner. The city sent a notice both by certified and first-class mail and recorded the same with the San Mateo County Clerk on February 4, 2019. City Engineer Sam Bautista received a written request for the hearing from an authorized representative of the subject owner on February 26. In accordance with the municipal code, the hearing shall be conducted within 30 days following the receipt of the owner's request, or may be postponed or continued by mutual consent of the Planning Commission and the property owner. Mr. Bautista attempted to schedule the hearing for February 15, however, was unable to secure the agreement on the extended date. Thus, the city had to schedule the hearing for the March 18 meeting in order to comply with the 30-day requirement of the municipal code. As required by the municipal code, on March 8, 2019, Mr. Bautista mailed by certified mail a notice of hearing to determine status to Mr. Blackman identifying a hearing date of March 18. The city additionally sent the notice via first-class mail to ensure that Mr. Blackman received the hearing date details. On March 12, Mr. Bautista also called and emailed Mr. Blackman to further inform him of the scheduled March 18 hearing date. The merger ordinance provides that two or more contiguous lots held by the same owner shall be considered as merged if one of the lots does not conform to the minimum parcel or lot size required by the zoning provisions. Staff determined the following regarding the listed lots. The subject lots are continuously adjacent under one common ownership based on visual observation of their shared boundaries in the Rockaway subdivision map number one. The subject lots are located within the R1H zoning district. The R1H zoning district has a minimum lot size and lot width of 5,000 square feet and 50 feet respectively. At least one of the subject lots does not meet the standards for the R1H zoning district. Additionally, at least one of the subject lots meets the requirement listed in PMC section 10-1.1201A and B. Staff has determined that the subject lots meets the requirement, the subject lots are undeveloped by any structure and comprise less than 5,000 square feet in area at the time of the determination of merger. As found in Attachment A, the subject owner was provided the analysis for the requirements and supporting documents in the notice of intention to determine status. The lot merger also qualifies as an exemption detailed under the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff therefore recommends adoption of the attached resolution determining that the requirements for merger have been met and the subject lot shall be merged. Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions for staff?
Yeah.
You do?
I do.
Okay. Commissioner Big Stick?
Thank you, Commissioner Clifford, and I'm relatively new, so I imagine I'm learning some basics as I go along, which will probably inform some of these questions, but bear with me accordingly. So... The big question I had going through it is, do we have any discretion, or do you have any discretion in terms of how these lots are merged? Does it de facto have to be one giant lot for the merger, or can it be broken into two lots, both of which comply?
Good evening, Commissioner, Senior Planner Christian Murdock. It's staff's opinion on reading the provisions of the municipal code with respect to lot mergers that the code requires that these lots be merged in their entirety into one lot. Because of the requirements to qualify for the merger and then the subsequent merger of all of the lots, we believe that the only appropriate outcome is one merged lot.
Okay, so if it's one merged lot, does the developer then have the option to put two residences on that one lot? That's big enough in other circumstances? If it were two lots to have a residence on each?
So the development potential of any piece of property in the city is governed by the general plan and the applicable zoning designation. The lot configuration does not determine the development potential, whether that's one, two, or multiple dwelling units. In this case, the underlying general plan designation is very-low-density residential, or VLDR, which indicates densities for residential development of a half acre per dwelling unit. And so, in the case of the property before you, the total land area of the one merged lot would be 11,250 square feet. And so pursuant to the general plan, it may be that there's no development potential anyways, regardless of how you would configure the lots. And so, the property does not meet the minimum density provisions in the general plan, and so, in staff's opinion, the question of how you would configure them is essentially a moot point.
Can I ask a hypothetical?
Sure, I'll do my best to answer it.
Sure, and I understand exactly what you said about the lot itself not conforming. In other circumstances in which the lot might conform, 10,000 square feet, 5,000 being the minimum, under those circumstances in which the lot would conform, would he be able to do a one-house project at one point and then later do another house as a separate project if he so chose?
So, again, that touches on aspects related to the general plan and the zoning, and so the development standard for the minimum lot size is one relevant characteristic. The approved uses for the site is another relevant characteristic. And so, under the zoning of this site, which is R1H, which is single-family residential hillside, it's indicated at one dwelling unit per lot. Property can be subdivided, which is a separate process, and subdivisions must be compliant with the general plan and the zoning, which again indicates a half acre per dwelling unit in the general plan and 5,000 square foot minimum lot size in the zoning. And so those two combined together suggest that the minimum appropriate land area for any lot in the VLDR designation is a half acre.
Thank you for helping me as I learn nuance.
Any other questions for staff? I have one following up on that. In terms of the actual ability to build on the lot, we're not in a position to take property, correct? So if they came forward with a plan that didn't met our approval, they would, in all likelihood, get to build at least one home.
So you touched on a very complicated legal question with respect to takings. Certainly, the city is not allowed to take property without just compensation. The city is allowed to regulate development potential, subject to certain standards. And so whether this property could develop in its current form, either as separate lots or with a single lot merged of 11,250 square feet in area, which is less than a half acre, is really fact-specific. An alternative for the property owner would be to seek a general plan amendment, changing the designation for his property, so that it would be subject to a different density requirement, in which case maybe there would be sufficient land area. So there are a variety of potential ways that development potential of this property could be addressed, and it's really not pertinent to tonight's conversation about the technical aspects of the lot merger and whether or not those criteria have been met to satisfy the requirements for merger.
I just wanted to make sure that the owner of the property had some kind of avenue forward.
Absolutely, and as I mentioned, that's a separate factual analysis that's not part of the lot merger requirement. This lot merger does not affect the development potential. That's separately regulated by the general plan and by the zoning ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Chair Clifford, if I may?
Yes.
Denise Pizano, Assistant City Attorney. I just wanted to add on to what Christian said, or sorry, Assistant Planner Murdock said, Senior Planner Murdock said. And that is just the issue before the Planning Commission today is whether or not the mergers meet the requirements of the municipal code. And so that is the decision that is at hand and not whether or not the parcels would be developable going forward.
Okay, thank you. I think it's now time to bring the applicant up, I guess. Come on up, Mr. Blackman.
Hello, Dave Blackman. I'm a 50-year resident here at Pacifica. And these two lots, just to say, one's 3,750 square feet, the other's 7,500 square feet. They both combined are 11,250. I disagree that it's a moot point if it's one or two lots, and if you've seen my track record lately, I've been trying to build smaller homes. I was up before you guys a few years ago asking for 400 square feet, and I got pushed up to 450. Doing one in Moss Beach for 900 square feet, and if you've been by the motel that I'm building, I'm doing little cottages at 400 feet. The difficulty for me is if you guys, I believe you have the choice to merge this or not. I believe the words were "may" merge, not "required" to merge. If they can correct me if they're wrong, if I'm wrong. And then for the taking part, you guys are asking really good questions. They're right, you could tell me I can't build on the lots, but you have to pay just compensation. Usually cities don't choose to do that because it's very expensive. I would love to build very small homes, but if you do merge these, it makes it a little bit more difficult, but it's okay if you merge this one. The next lots are 15,000 square foot apiece, and that's more the reason why I'm here tonight. So I'm really hoping you don't merge this one. You do have that choice to postpone this. Allow me to do a lot line adjustment that would make two 6,500 square foot lots if you postpone this. I would also offer a deed restriction that would never build more than one story, and I wouldn't build more than 1,000 feet if you would entertain an extension and let me put that application in. But if you don't, and it's too complicated for everybody, I can walk away from that. But that doesn't stop somebody from building a large home on a large lot, which I'm hoping doesn't happen there. So I'm offering to go ahead and do a lot line adjustment, make two medium-sized lots, and I don't think they were accurate about saying the general plan amendment. I believe it's already in motion for the other lot owners so they can build. They're already moving the change in the general plan, but Christian can touch on that if you ask him. So I hope you don't merge them tonight, but if you do, I understand, and I'll see you on the next number two.
Okay. Commissioner Big Stick, did you have a question for the applicant? Got your light here.
Chair Clifford, it might be wise to let the public comment proceed, because it's not a formal applicant per se. So this wouldn't be the typical process where we give the applicant a specific amount of time?
I can, we can bring him back up if we need to. Okay, I'm now going to open the public portion of this hearing. And is there anybody who would like to speak on this matter? Would you fill out a yellow card? You can, okay. I got them, thank you. Did notice them. And Adrian?
Oh, I'm Chris.
Oh, you're Chris. Okay, Chris, come on up, Chris.
I'm Chris Capule, I live in Rockaway Beach. A couple of things become important here, and that is the difference between the zoning in Rockaway Beach and the general plan designations. I'd like the Planning Commission to follow the general plan recommendations for housing. The other two things are pretty quick, and we'll go for both item one and item two. The first is, we have asked over and over again for Rockaway Beach to have a public planning process for the development of the area. There are many lots, most of them not according to the general plan designations that are ready for houses. The second issue, and it would be cheaper than having us do this over and over again for every parcel for every possible development. The second issue is, nobody knows where these lots are, and I've asked over and over that there be some visual cues put up when we have discussions, so that there can be informed discussions from the residents of Rockaway Beach. And the last piece is that this gives me cognitive dissonance in terms of the negative mitigated declaration for the Diaz-Masias property, which did a very limited cumulative analysis of the effect that the road, the proposed road, would have on the community in Rockaway Beach. They basically said that the development of land east of the Diaz-Masias property would be moot because it's unlikely to be developed. That negative mitigated declaration may have been a little short-sighted, since it seems like there are plans to develop the east end of Rockaway Beach, the hills in Rockaway Beach. Thank you very much.
Okay. And then Andrea? Aiello.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for holding this hearing tonight. My name is Andrea Aiello, and I live at 708 Rockaway Beach Avenue. And my main point tonight is that we have been asking for years now to have a real plan for Rockaway. There are so many, on both sides of the street, undeveloped parcels. The road is narrow, it is not taken care of by the city, it is very dangerous. We really need to have a plan that can really address how, what, where new development is happening in the valley. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak? That's the end of my cards here. Not seeing anyone, I'm going to close the public portion of the comments. Now, does anybody have any, well, the applicant has an opportunity to come up to speak to anything he's heard so far. He's got three minutes.
I'll come back up if you have any questions.
Oh, okay. Does anybody have any questions? Looks like Commissioner Big Stick?
Sure. And I did go up to the area where I thought there might be a street leading to the property earlier, and I think I found where a street might wind up, but I was wondering about that in general. That's not a specific question though, although if it's addressed, great. So I heard a mention about general plan a couple of times by a few people. And so my question there is, we would follow what at the moment is current rather than what is in the works, correct?
That is correct if you were to be considering a development application this evening. Tonight's matter before the commission is whether or not the technical requirements for lot merger have been met pursuant to Article 12 of Chapter 1 of Title 10 of the Pacifico Municipal Code.
So is that, we're not taking development into consideration at all, we're just deciding whether or not those conditions have been met specifically?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Dave, stay there, because I do have one. Could you restate for the commission what you would desire to do with your property if you could?
There's nothing in the short term, and I do really wish, and I've talked to different council people, I do think in Pacifica, the most vacant lots are all in Rockaway. And if we just hodgepodge develop each one one by one, I think Rockaway is going to be in bad shape. I think as a city, we should get together and figure out which areas should be built, what shouldn't be built, and mitigate it, maybe as a whole, purchase some of these. But I agree with all the people who've just walked up here before and other nights that I've been up here with other projects, that this not dealing with us as a whole is dangerous. But to answer your question, I have four kids that are entering adulthood, they cannot afford to live here. I built that little house on Francisco for 600 square feet. I'd like to build some homes of that size for them. And I will do it later in the future unless the city comes up with a plan that I agree and it sounds great, but otherwise I'd like to do very small homes.
All right, thank you very much for that.
I'd like to add a statement, if possible. I agree with the staff report that the lots do comply with the municipal code. I think the opportunity for subdivision in the future and lot line adjustment in the future can be an opportunity in regards to the municipal code compliance. I believe the lots can be merged. In regards to SEQA, I agree that the lots are SEQA exempt, given that there is no substantial environmental impact. However, for future site development, a site development permit should be received, and at that time, any SEQA requirements should be addressed.
Chair, if I may, address a couple of points raised by the property owner, to correct them for the record. First, the property owner indicated a variety of different lot sizes that he believed actually exist at the site. It's my opinion that he may be confusing the assessor parcel boundaries with the actual underlying lot configurations. So it's staff's research that has indicated that the original subdivision that was conducted in the early 1900s, the Rockaway Beach subdivision number one, those original lots that are subject of this particular merger item are the original lots that were subdivided, 3,750 square foot lots. We believe the San Mateo County assessor may have grouped those lots in a different configuration for taxation purposes, but those taxation parcels do not reflect the underlying lots that are subject of the merger, which, based on evidence presented by staff, are 3,750 square feet each, and there are three of them contiguously located in this case, for a total of 11,250 square feet of land area.
Okay. And you're not recommending us merging things in such a way that three lots become two?
I'm not, I don't believe, the staff does not believe that that's within the commission's discretion. Either the requirements for merger in their entirety are met or they are not met based on the facts and the evidence presented tonight. The applicant, or I should say the property owner, has described some other alternatives, such as filing a lot line adjustment. Staff does not believe that that is an option for the applicant, given the requirements to merge. If you look at section 10-1.1201 of the municipal code, it indicates that two or more... it indicates that two or more contiguous parcels or units held by the same owner shall be considered merged if one of these parcels or units does not conform to the minimum parcel or lot size required by the zoning provisions, and if all of the following requirements are met, which are set forth in A through D subsections. The staff report outlines that analysis, and that staff believes the evidence indicates those criteria have been met. As a result, the lots shall be considered merged. The "may" that the property owner referred to is, at the hearing that we are at tonight, if the commission weighs other evidence submitted by the applicant that suggests the lots do not meet the criteria, they shall not be merged if they do not meet the criteria. That's, in my opinion, where the "may" permissive language comes from in the code. But they are currently deemed to be merged, and shall be merged if, shall be considered merged if those requirements are met.
And if I may add, through the chair, that a lot line adjustment process, even though we have not analyzed that and have not received that, may be frustrated by the requirement that, or the finding that staff needs to make that it's consistent with the general plan as well.
Thank you very much for that. All right. Any more comments from Commissioner Big Stick?
I'd just like to ask you to repeat what you just said about the "may" language, please?
So the property owner indicated that the commission is not bound to merge the lots, but rather, it may merge the lots. I disagree, based on the plain reading of Section 10-1.1201, which indicates that the property, two or more contiguous parcels held by the same owner shall be considered merged if one of the parcels or units does not conform to the minimum parcel or lot size, which is the case. And the, all of the following requirements in subsections A through D are met.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, when a statute or an ordinance uses the word "shall", it's a mandatory duty, whereas "may" is typically denotes discretion.
Thank you for that. Can I have your light again?
Yes, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead and make a motion.
Can I just read it straight out of the packet, right? Just read it straight out of the packet, right?
Yeah.
So I move that the planning commission find that the lot merger is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Adopt the resolution, include as attachment deed to the staff report determining the subject lots shall be merged, and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have any comments or questions on, on the motion? I'm not seeing any lights.
Well, I'm, I'm feeling compelled to refrain from taking any action on this, given that I arrived late, unless somebody could give me a summary of what I missed, in which case I'd be perhaps inclined to second a motion.
Commissioner Vermon, were you reaching for your button? Is it, is it not working? Ah, there it is, now it's working. Would you like to speak?
I second the motion to, I'm in support of merging the lots, and I'd like to second the motion to merge the lots.
Sounds fine. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, and that passes. Your light didn't come up.
I, I'm, I'm not voting.
You're not going to vote on this also? Okay, so we have four, four, and one abstention.
Four to zero.
Four to zero?
Four in favor, or?
I'm saying four in favor, and then there's one here who is abstaining from voting. Okay, and now we're going to move down to the next series of lots. This is file number 2019-017, hearing on the determination of status related to a city initiative, initiated merger of lots 37 through 44 in Block 25 of Rockaway Beach subdivision number one, RSM 6/53.
Thank you, Chair. Senior Civil Engineer Raymond Danginhas will present the staff report.
Good evening again, commissioners. The same situation, except these lots are now lots 37 to 44 in the same block, two APNs. Again, the difference is, on hearing number one, the owner is David Blackman Construction, Inc., and these properties are owned by David Blackman. So same situation, except lots 37 to 44. And staff recommends adoption of the resolution determining that the requirements for merger have been met, and subject lots have been merged.
Okay, and these lots are each 3,750 square feet?
Correct. Each lot are 3,750 and 25 foot wide by 150 foot in length.
Okay. So that comes up to about 30,000 square feet.
Correct. Which, which for the record, is over a half acre.
Is over a half an acre. Okay. Thank you very much for that information. Any questions for staff?
Yep.
Commissioner Big Stick?
I have a couple of questions. So the lots were parceled out in early 1900s, and then a little later, we come to the conclusion that we want any of these lots to be 5,000, and if they're not, we automatically merge them. Why is it we're now deciding that that kind of automatic switch to merge is something we get to decide to do, rather than it having been decided in advance automatically?
Sure. Good evening, commission, senior planner, Christian Murdock. You raise a good point. The city did undertake hundreds and hundreds of city-initiated mergers through a comprehensive process in the mid 1980s, most of which were recorded in 1985 and 1986, if I'm remembering correctly. So the city has attempted to systematically undertake these mergers through a comprehensive analysis of lots in the ownership that they were at that time. The city, to my knowledge, has not undertaken a comprehensive analysis since then. That analysis in the mid 1980s was precipitated by changes in state law, which would have perhaps undone mergers under prior laws if they weren't perfected through this process that we're undertaking tonight. And so since then, there hasn't been a coordinated effort, to my knowledge, to, to go back and periodically revisit current ownership, if owners have sold or assembled property that would qualify for merger. In the case of the properties proposed for merger tonight, in items number one and two, the city learned of the common ownership and the qualification for merger as a result of working on a development project proposed nearby. And so in analyzing the total development potential of the area as part of the environmental review process, I identified the property owned by Dave Blackman and David Blackman Construction Incorporated, and two other property owners who have not contested the lot merger process, met the qualifications for merger, and that this process was mandated. As the Assistant City Attorney Bizzano indicated, the commission, in my opinion, has a duty, or the city, rather, has a duty, it shall consider the lots merged, if the criteria are met. So whether this process has unfolded or not, that shall be considered the case, that the lots shall be considered merged. And now, as a result of us learning of the criteria being met, we provided the proper notice that the code and state law requires, and the property owner in this case has contested, or rather, sought a hearing to determine the status of his property.
Sure. And it would be a large undertaking at this point to go back through and see if there are any more instances like this, and it would be a major event
It would be, yes.
for the city to undertake that.
Yes.
So if there were consensus, could there be a side note, just, and I understand how much the city has going on, that they just had the goal setting for the year, and that in near-future years, it may not in any manner or way shape be a priority. But could there be a recommendation kind of stapled on, if there's consensus, that maybe that kind of undertaking somewhere down the road might be a good idea if council decides so?
I mean, certainly that could occur. You know, that's a discussion to be had between the city manager and director weremeister as far as their recommendation on priority and staff resources to undertake that, and their recommendation to the city council. I think, as you hinted, this has not come to the level of the council, indicating this as a work plan.
Plenty of priorities going on.
Right.
Yeah. And certainly, as I'm speaking, I'm entering into public record that at least one opinion says it's not a bad idea.
Absolutely.
Cool, I do have one other question. As I was looking at packet pages 77 through 82, the property assessments. So what I noticed about these two property assessments, which were different from the property assessments I was looking at for item number one, is that there are two different addresses on these two different property assessments. So, so far, what I've been given as an understanding is probably it would just be all merged into one giant 30,000 square foot lot, except I'm noticing that there's a discrepancy in owner address on these two different assessments, which, to my sensibility, at least, all things being conceptual and theoretical when we're talking about drawing lines, there's a slight difference between lots 37 through 40 being one ascribed to one address, and lots 41 through 44 being ascribed to a different address. And so I'm wondering if that at all factors into our decision-making?
Sure. You point out the observation that the San Mateo County Assessor, for taxation purposes, has a different owner address for David Blackman for one APN or assessor parcel number for one group of lots, as it does for another. It's my opinion that that does not affect the basis for merger. The requirement is common ownership, and then the other physical criteria. The owner is the same. It's the same David Blackman. No evidence has been presented that there's a different David Blackman that owns the property at one address, and another David Blackman at the other address. We don't have any evidence to explain the discrepancy. I speculate it may be a former address by, from the property owner. I don't know. But it doesn't change the fact that the evidence indicates that David Blackman owns both of these collections of lots under the assessor parcel numbers indicated. And moreover, David Blackman is here this evening, and so has received notice and due process to come to the hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Nebelen?
Thank you, and this is probably a function of me arriving late, which I, which I apologize for. I was dealing with a family thing. But, and I think that Commissioner Big Stick touched on it. So the proposal, then, is to merge, I'm looking at page 61 in the chart there, affected lot detail. The proposal, then, is to merge all of those lots into one resulting lot thereafter. Is that the, is that the idea?
That's correct.
And just one other clarifying question. I, I saw in the write-up, which was, I think, very clear, and I appreciated it, but I did have one question. It was the, it looked to me like two of the property owners had not appealed. And I was assuming that was the Diaz-Massius and the Jacobs property, but it looked like David Blackman Construction had two, maybe three, 34, 35, three, three parcels as well. And those aren't the subject of anything we're dealing with today. Is that, is that right?
I'm not sure I understand the question. You are correct.
Well, I was looking at the chart, David Blackman Construction, and
That was hearing number one.
That was, that's what I missed.
Then to item number one, yes.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, that's all I have.
All righty, so, where are we at now? That was questions to staff. Now, Dave, would you like to come up and say a few words? Getting lost up here.
No, not really. But I'm just going to talk about the unintended consequences. Damn it, I really wanted to build little houses out there on Palmetto. Enough people poked and pushed and pulled, and now we got one big building out there. I swear that you guys have the ability to postpone this. Let me do a lot line adjustment, put them in different names, do something. But if you don't, I'm fine. But I really wanted to build little homes up there. And just like on Palmetto, I think I'm getting pushed the other direction. And I don't know what you can do with 30,000 square foot lot home, or lot, that's huge. I did put these, some in my corporation, some in my personal name, just so it doesn't become one big lot. So that's why I did that. I am the David Blackman owns both of them. I, maybe I didn't get one of the addresses right, but, or didn't update it when I moved. But I really wish you guys would slow down. Have a big plan for Rockaway, but I understand Christian's saying that this is mandatory. It's been this way since 1908, and it's mandatory tonight. I'm not sure I agree with that, but okay.
Thank you, Dave. And now I'm going to open it to the public for any questions. And that's Chris, right?
He was at my house years ago with his projects to build little houses. And I think that little houses are great. But they're usually around transit hubs, and they don't require a 30-foot wide street to be built along, parallel to Rockaway Beach. And just for everyone to know, there are three paper streets in Rockaway Beach, one on the south side and two on the north side. So in order to build little houses, we still need cars to get people to the little houses, and we still need streets to get them out. So just, just a point that makes me think that we should stick to the general plan. And Christian, I don't know, Christian and Tina, if, where these lots fall in terms of the general plan, because I do know that some of these lots are in the one acre required area, not in the half acre required area. And if we ever do a planning process, and if we ever see a new general plan, it might make sense to have some of this deemed open space, which was the plan of the council and the, and your commission, oh, within my lifetime here in Pacifico. So we do need a plan. I totally agree with you. I know there has to be housing. Little houses, I think, belong in transit hubs. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public portion of this hearing. Dave, you have the opportunity to speak for another couple of minutes, three minutes exactly.
I don't really understand the difference of two little houses or one large home, the requirements of the road. I think it still requires a road, but I guess that's not, that's a mute point tonight.
All right, I have a light from Commissioner Big Stick.
So Mr. Blackman has used the term lot line adjustments, and when it comes to the technical stuff, I'm pretty new. So my question is, if he is allowed a process of lot line adjustments, first of all, if he could clarify for me what that looks like, what that is. And my question is, would that solve the issue if he was allowed a small amount of time to do that, so as to merge the property on his own terms?
So a lot line adjustment is a procedure specified in the subdivision map act for adjustment of lot line boundaries of pre-existing lots. And so a lot line adjustment does not create new lots. It only changes the boundaries of existing properties. The subdivision map act, in its procedures for lot line adjustments, has certain limitations, which are quite relevant to the matter before the commission under this grouping of lots. So a lot line adjustment may not affect more than four lots. And in this case, we have eight lots in question. A lot line adjustment must be consistent with the general plan and the zoning. with the general plan and the zoning. And as we've mentioned, the general plan in this area indicates a minimum half acre per dwelling unit. And so perhaps for a variety of reasons, probably most immediately the fact that it would affect more than four lots in this case. A lot line adjustment would not be an option to reconfigure the entirety of the property in question. With that in mind, I think it would be initially my opinion that the opportunity for that has passed and that the municipal code requires these lots to be merged. And they shall be considered merged, as I mentioned previously, unless the criteria are not met. And it's staff's opinion that the evidence in the record indicates they do qualify for merger and therefore shall be merged. And we hope the commission reaches that determination.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Burden?
Can staff please confirm that the owner will have the opportunity to subdivide in the future, once the lots are possibly merged?
Sure. So the applicant absolutely has the right to apply for a subdivision. And at that time, the city staff would review the proposed subdivision against the applicable general plan, zoning, and subdivision ordinance standards for subdivision of lots. And then would bring forward a recommendation to the planning commission to either approve, modify, or deny the subdivision. We're not able to deny the applicant the right to apply for a subdivision. It's his right, but that's a separate process which would follow upon a separate application to the city. If I may just follow up on one more point related to a lot line adjustment. We do believe a lot line adjustment could make sense for the applicant, assuming the commission approves this lot merger as well, to conduct a lot merger, or a lot line adjustment, rather, between the David Blackman and the David Blackman Construction Incorporated properties. Seeing as the lots to be merged under this agenda item would exceed a half acre, it's, the possibility exists that some of that additional balance above a half acre could be transferred to the other grouping of lots that were approximately eleven thousand square feet in total, to at least get them closer to being a half an acre, rather than leaving them in a significantly substandard condition.
If I may.
Commissioner Burden?
One, one more question. So in the case that in the future the lots are subdivided, then will the requirement of the five thousand square feet minimum and fifty-foot minimum width will be applied to each lot that's subdivided? Is that correct?
Not necessarily. So the subdivision needs to be reviewed for general plan compliance, zoning compliance, and subdivision standard compliance. So immediately, the applicant would have to indicate the slope of the area. And there's a table known as Table Four in the subdivision standards, which sets minimum lot sizes based on slope. The applicant can pursue a subdivision based on different standards, based on general plan standards, but there are other criteria which must be met, which are difficult to meet, and most applicants rely on the simpler standards in the table. Once that threshold is surpassed, then we would look at general plan consistency and zoning standards consistency. Because the zoning sets forth much smaller lot sizes than the density standards, which imply half acre lots, generally the more restrictive standard would apply, which would mean likely the half acre minimum lot size requirement would be imposed on the project.
Okay.
But that, those factual determinations could only be made subject to a future application and that application being reviewed on its merits. I'm just giving general, a general explanation of a typical procedure that might apply.
Thank you.
Commissioner Big Stick?
So you talked about the lot line adjustment. Within the context of the two different properties, once the merger occurs, is that correct?
Correct. So under this item, we're considering a merger for David Blackman and individual. On the prior agenda item number one, the lot merger was pertaining to property owned by David Blackman Construction Incorporated, which is a separate legal entity, both controlled by David Blackman, but separate legal entities for purposes of this lot merger. Those being separate legal entities, they could conduct a lot line adjustment between the two, potentially, perhaps to shift some of the land area from the thirty thousand square foot land area to the eleven thousand two hundred fifty square foot land area. And that balance, I would imagine, would be that amount over a half an acre from thirty thousand.
I feel silly having to ask this question this way, but it's the only way I can think to ask it. Would he then have to transfer the property to himself if he were to do such a thing in some amount?
Would he have to what?
Because David Blackman Construction owns one property, David Blackman owns the other. I'm thinking in terms of them, they're both him, which is a legal nuance that I'm probably missing there. But so does David Blackman have to transfer some of his property to David Blackman Construction in order to do a lot line adjustment after the mergers happened?
So through the chair, I don't know if I'm maybe misunderstanding your question, but you do not have, the two parcels that are, or more that are involved in a lot line adjustment do not need to be owned by the same individual. So neighbors do lot line adjustments. It's very common.
City and a private property owner. It just happens in this case, they're both controlled by the same person, but one of them is not a person, one of them is a corporation, and the other one is a, an individual.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. Oh, is that something we would be deciding tonight?
No, absolutely not. So-
Okay. Thank you.
The, the decision tonight is whether or not the criteria are met. The output, the property owner has the right to apply subsequent to tonight's hearing to the engineering division of the Public Works Department.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If there's no more questions, maybe some comments and/or a motion. Commissioner Nebelen?
Well, I'm ready to make a motion for merger of parcels. And I move that the planning commission find the lot merger is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Adopt the resolution that includes attachment D to the staff report determining that the subject lot shall be merged and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
And Commissioner Kreske?
Yeah, I second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Okay. All right. And now we're on to item three. Item three is text amendment, file number two thousand nineteen dash zero zero three, text amendment TA one-one-four dash one-nine, to amend the Article forty-nine of the City of Pacifica Zoning Regulations Title Nine, Chapter Four of the Pacifica Municipal Code, as well as other articles of the City Pacifica Zoning Regulations to increase the maximum number of marijuana retailers' operations in the Rockaway Beach and Sharp Park Marijuana Operations Overlay Districts. To amend the regulations related to testing and manufacturing operations, finding for approval of use permit prioritizes certain lottery listing, lottery list applicants, cannabis extraction by manufacturers, parking standards for marijuana operations, and other administrative amendments to create efficiency in the park, in the permit process, and conform with state law amendments. Can I have a staff report, please?
Good evening, commissioners. I am Associate Planner Bonnie O'Connor. In July twenty seventeen, the city council adopted a marijuana ordinance to locally permit and regulate the sales of marijuana in Pacifica within the confines of the California law. Pacifica is one of a small number of cities in the state to be the first to permit adult use marijuana sales and the first in San Mateo County. As with any innovative program implementation, staff prepared the council to anticipate the need for future refinements based on unanticipated factors. During the initial application process for a marijuana use permit, twelve applications successfully proceeded through the two public safety phases and were placed on the Pacifica Qualified Marijuana Registration List. All of the twelve applicants were applying for retail operations and therefore have been processed by the city as allowed in their assigned lottery rankings. To date, four retail applications have been approved, two in Sharp Park and two in Rockaway Beach. Three applications remain on the Qualified Marijuana Registration List, one in Rockaway, and two for the same property in Sharp Park. No applications for marijuana, for manufacturing or testing operations have been received. In January twenty nineteen, council solicited input from the public regarding additional amendments to the city's marijuana regulations to encourage retail operations, expand potential for cannabis manufacturing operations, and update the regulations to incorporate and maintain consistency with state law updates. Staff has prepared the following proposed amendments based on direction received from the city council on July, or January fourteenth, twenty nineteen. The staff report in council meeting minutes captured, capturing the council's direction is included as attachment B in tonight's staff report. The staff report provides a summary of each of the proposed amendments, which I'll briefly touch on here. Staff is proposing amendments that would keep the city's marijuana ordinance in conformance with and consistent with amendments to state marijuana regulations. The state has enacted new laws since the adoption of the city's marijuana ordinance, and edits to the city's marijuana ordinance would be appropriate to reflect these changes. Staff is proposing amendments that would improve clarity and efficiencies of implementing the marijuana ordinance based on staff's experience to date. Amendments to allow potential applicants for manufacturing and testing operations to proceed through the application process prior to the closure of the initial application phase, defining the process to close the initial application phase, allowing, allowing phases of the proposed cannabis activity permit, or the CAP, process to proceed concurrently, and defining parking standards for cannabis operations to remove the need for individual parking analyses, are all intended to improve the permit process for applicants. Lastly, staff is proposing amendments to alter the standards for the marijuana ordinance based on direction and input from council and the public during the January fourteen, twenty nineteen study session. Amendments to increase the maximum allowed number of cannabis retail operations in the Rockaway Beach and Sharp Park Cannabis Operation Overlay Districts from two to three, from two to three operations, and adding an additional finding to the CAP approval, allowing manufacturers to use non-hazardous extraction methods, and allowing manufacturers to deliver their own products are all proposed changes which would modify the general allowances under the marijuana ordinance and are based on support provided by the council and the public. These amendments are fully detailed in the draft ordinance in attachment A of the staff report. Staff is requesting that these amendments be recommended by the planning commission for approval by the city council. Staff would like to identify that on page one-twenty of your packet, you will find duplicated language in section nine dash four, point four-eight-zero-four, subsection A, subsection two, subsection Roman numeral four, and Roman numeral six. This duplication was not corrected in the proposed amendments, but staff would suggest the commission, to the commission, that a motion for recommendation for approval include a modification to strike section nine dash four, point four-eight, oh-four, subsection A, subsection two, subsection Roman numeral six. Staff, as well as our cannabis policy consultant from HDL, is here to help answer any questions. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Nebelen?
Probably for the consultant. I was just sort of interested in the kind of, I guess, competitive effects of going from two to three potential permities in these particular districts, sort of what the, what the analysis, if any, is on, on that.
That, Tim Cromartie with HDL Companies, good unique commission members. That really depends on your, your local and regional demand. Local and regional demand tends to be flat, by which I mean it's a constant. You do reach a point at which the, if you continue to add additional retail businesses specifically, at some point, they will begin to cannibalize off of one another and divide up the pie so that each one of them has a smaller market share. But to go from two retail outlets to three is not a dramatic increase. If you were to go to suddenly from two to five, then you might have a more significant impact. And the individual businesses might be complaining that we're not making the revenue that we anticipated. And obviously, if you have a local tax in place, then the city is not going to be getting, generating the revenue that they would expect.
Well, thank, I appreciate that. I was a little concerned because the areas we're talking about aren't especially large, you know, geographically. So I can appreciate then two to three in your, in your estimation isn't necessarily going to be extraordinarily detrimental to the entities we've already permitted. A larger number might be, though.
Correct. And one thing to keep in mind is that an estimated minimum of fifty percent of all cities statewide are still prohibiting this kind of commercial activity. So to the degree you're, you have awareness and we can help with that in terms of what other jurisdictions are doing. Obviously, you have the big one, San Francisco to the north. But to the degree smaller cities around have enacted regulations on this, a lot of them probably still have total bans in place, which they're allowed to do under Prop sixty-four. And that certainly would help draw business from surrounding areas.
So it's a visitor-serving use.
Exactly.
Commissioner Big Stick?
I have a bunch of questions. First of all, nuance, for the sake of the coastal commission, is a zoning standard the same as a zoning regulation?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. Cannabis manufacturing and testing operations are not allowed to sell product directly to the consumer, correct?
That is correct.
Are there state mandated steps between the manufacturer and the retailer?
Yeah. And Tim can help describe this further. But in order for product to get from a manufacturer to a retailer, they need to go through a licensed distributor. The amendments that we're proposing would allow a local manufacturer to do a transport-only distribution, which would allow them to distribute their own product to the retailer. They would need the, the appropriate state license to do that, but they would be permitted to do that.
So they'd permit, they'd get the permits to be a distributor as well as a manufacturer?
Correct.
Kind of like distilled spirits? I'll come back to that question because it's chronologically. Have taxes, fees, fines, or penalties been assessed for businesses past or present operating Pacifica without a cannabis activity permit?
Denise Bazano, Assistant City Attorney. So the marijuana tax operation, marijuana operation tax in the city code does require that if a business is doing, conducting any commercial cannabis activity, that it is subject to the tax?
Sure. So I know that there were operations acting before we put the law in place. And my understanding was, at some point, at least one business was trying to figure out how to give taxes to the city and having difficulty until finally they figured out the way. So my question is, for businesses such as that, have we assessed them all at this point in time?
So there, there was a process where the finance department was getting up to speed in implementing the tax, but the code does provide that if you're conducting commercial cannabis activity within the city limits, that you are subject to the tax.
Okay. Do we know that those businesses, conducting their business, were given the bill for those taxes?
I am not aware of every business getting a bill for a tax, but I, I believe that the city is, has looked at every commercial cannabis activity that has been conducted in the city that they know about to see if pursuing those tax, outstanding tax amounts would be appropriate.
So by now, probably, they've all been given the opportunity to pay their due?
I believe that the city has looked at each one of those, yes.
And they had the opportunity to? I remember a story of one of them being like, okay, now I know how much I'm supposed to pay. Where do I pay it? And they're having trouble in that moment finding the place. I just want to make sure that-
Right. So there was an application that came before the planning commission. I believe it was surefire. Well, it was actually Lit in the prior, there was a business that had been operated by one of the owners of Lit. And they were given the opportunity to pay the outstanding tax, taxes out.
By now, if anybody hasn't paid, it's probably due to their own negligence. Probably.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Ultimately, what I'm getting at- Ultimately, what I'm getting at is, you know, whether or not there should be allowance of a grace period or something like that.
The code doesn't allow a grace period.
Looking at packet page one-twelve, section nine dash four point four eight oh one, definitions explicitly stating that extraction, extraction methods may include heat, and now I'm going into the ordinance itself. But the overview of the discussion in the staff report, part G, mentions that chilling might be a part of the mechanical extraction process in R of section nine, again, page one-twelve. I see heat mentioned, but not cold mentioned. Does chilling need to be explicitly stated in that part of the definition since R is a definition? And again, I see it in part G of the staff report, but then in R under definitions, again, heat, not cold, so does cold need to be interjected there?
So heat in this reference is being used as a noun to represent a type of energy?
Sure.
And so, heat would include chill as, chilling is the lack of heat.
Kind of like air conditioning usually is referred to the cold process, but it also applies to the warm process.
Right, so, so we can, we can suggest an alternative term to maybe clarify that fact. One suggestion may be to replace the word heat with thermal connectivity to describe the movement of the energy, but the word heat was, was intended to include different varies, different levels of heat.
Specifically, I want to make sure it maintains that legal criteria, whatever that may mean, so it sounds like heat catches it all, despite unacquainted viewing. By definition, a customer includes a person eighteen years of age or older who possesses a physician's recommendation. So my question is, person's meeting the definition of a customer, do we need to clarify their medical or not adult use or mixed use, or do we need to clarify where that type of customer is able to use their medicinal exemption? Packet page one-fifteen.
Yeah, so our, our zoning code doesn't distinguish between an adult-use retailer and a medicinal retailer. We've had one applicant who has chosen to be purely a medicinal retailer. They would, of course, allow a customer that meets this definition. The other applicants have been an adult-use and medicinal.
Sure.
So in that, in those instances, a customer would also be allowed in because, for their medicinal needs. In the event that we have an applicant that is only proposing adult-use retail-
Oh, I see.
Then, then that customer wouldn't, that exception wouldn't apply to that retailer, so they would-
Am I still on? Yeah. So, a customer eighteen years of age with a physician's recommendation can walk into a facility that is both adult-use and medicinal?
Correct.
But they would not be able to walk into a facility that's only adult-use?
Correct.
And is that clarified in the nine dash four point four eight oh three, D one three, on packet page one-fifteen?
Again, it's not clarified because our zoning code doesn't provide that distinct, distinction between it. It would be the operator that would have to implement-
The burden's not on us to clarify that.
Correct.
Commissioner Big Stick, what I would suggest is that should you, should the commission review an application for a cannabis activity permit in the future that indicates they only intend to have adult-use sales, that would probably be an appropriate time to impose a condition of approval that explicitly restricts access to those twenty-one years of age or older, to consider that condition of approval at that time. As Mrs. O'Connor indicated, it's not a distinction that's made in the text of the ordinance.
Sure, it sounds like the state already says that, though, based on what Ms. O'Connor Are manufacturing operations subject to the same overlay districts since they'd only be selling product to businesses or even passing them on to distributors?
Manufacturing operations are a conditional use in the C-three zoning district. They do not need to be located in a cannabis overlay district.
So it's different zoning? Thank you.
And if it's all right with Commissioner Big Stick, I'm going to allow somebody else a chance to ask some questions.
Absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner Broom?
Yes, I have a question regarding the proposed amendment, item G, just in regards to the public health, and given that production of the cannabinoids will be consumed, is there a condition that will be applied where these retail facilities will have to comply with food prep requirements?
So just for clarification, the items, the amendments discussed under item G apply to manufacturers?
So for the retailer to produce their own?
Retailers are not allowed to do those types of activities under a retail license, where they repackage materials.
Okay, so there wouldn't be an instance where a retailer in Pacifica would be producing their own, or extracting their own?
Tim, is there any-
That's, that's more under the umbrella of the manufacturing license, not the retail license.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, and I, I have a couple of questions right now. We're, we have overlays throughout the city, and the maximum number of retail that we can have based on the, what was, has been approved, is six. And we're now talking about putting six within two of these overlays. We're not adding any more, right? We're always going to stay with six, at least unless it gets, that comes up for a vote?
The, the direction that we were provided from the council was that the citywide maximum was going to be constant at six, and so it's just increasing the number allowed in each of these two overlay districts.
And have you heard, heard anything back from either area or both areas about concerns about impact of a third retail, marijuana retailer in there?
No, we have not, no.
I believe at a prior city meeting, whether it was Planning Commission or City Council escapes me at the moment, but I believe some permitted retailers in the Sharp Park District expressed concern that three could be too many for the business climate and demand currently. Additionally, we've heard sort of general concern about cannabis retail operations generally in the Rockaway Beach neighborhood. In fact, someone appealed the four-fifty Old County Road Marijuana Use Permit application, but ultimately withdrew that application prior to the appeal being heard, and so there have been folks unsettled about either cannabis retail operations generally or the degree of concentration. And those comments pertained to the two affected overlay districts, Sharp Park and Rockaway Beach.
Okay, yeah. Thank you very much for that. Any more questions from, oh, Commissioner Big Stick?
Got three, maybe four, and then I'm done, I promise. So have any businesses been applied for in the other overlay districts?
Oh, no need.
Sure, so during the initial application phase for the city's cannabis permitting process, we received applications for three overlay districts, Sharp Park and Rockaway Beach, obviously, as well as the Lindemar Overlay District, which included the Lindemar Shopping Center, Pedro Point Shopping Center, and a couple independent commercial properties in the vicinity of the Pedro Point Shopping Center. Subsequent to that application in the Lindemar Overlay District making it to the Marijuana Use Permit phase, the property owner withdrew authorization. And so that was, would have been the fifth potential marijuana use permit that could have been issued under the existing zoning regulations, but seeing as that application was withdrawn, it left us with only applications in Sharp Park and Rockaway Beach. We've not received applications for the Fairmont Shopping Center or the Park Mall Shopping Center Overlay Districts.
Just to make sure I'm clear on that point, that application was pulled back because ultimately they couldn't find a place to set up shop there?
The, the applicant had identified a property to establish a cannabis retail operation, however, the, after initially authorizing the application, the property owner withdrew that authorization for reasons that are private and unknown to the city. And I will just want to clarify, is your question pertaining to the first round of applications, or?
Yeah, I'm still on first round of application. I think I have one question about later, but-
Because, because to be clear, the initial application phase is still in effect, and we have not opened up new retail applications, and so we have no way to gauge what the level of interest could be for potential operators in the other overlay districts, seeing as how they're not able to apply currently.
And if there was applications in the other overlay districts, then that might sway me as to whether or not to increase density in those two overlay districts, but it sounds like they tried for a business in one of the other ones, and due to finally finding a place where they could set up shop, that didn't work. And I'm wondering if that's a common experience in the other overlay districts, which is why there's such a high concentration of focus in Sharp Park and Rockaway, and then that informs whether or not to increase amount of businesses admissible in those two places. That's what I'm getting at, or what I'm processing. Parking, so in the event of a number of parking spaces that result not being a whole number, do we round up or down to the nearest whole number, or do we not round at all?
Yeah, so our code already addresses this. When we come up with a fractional parking space that is above point five, we round up. If it's below point five, we round down.
There was a term used on packet, packet page one-twenty-seven, and now we're, now I am getting into the second phase, I guess. The term was initiation of revocation proceedings by the Planning Commission. That was letter D. And that, it's regarding the nullification of a public safety license shall automatically terminate the cannabis activity permit issued to the licensee, and shall terminate the ability of the licensee to operate a cannabis operation without initiation of revocation proceedings by the Planning Commission. And so when I read that, I was not quite sure what it meant.
So typically, if the city wants to revoke a use permit, there is, there's standard procedure to do that, including giving due notice to the, the owner or the, the permity, thank you, and, and it requires a hearing. But what this is saying is that if the license is already revoked, then the use permit is revoked without going through that formal process.
Okay, it would not invoke that formal process. And then finally, according to the new language in the ordinance, after the initial application phase ends, new applications, once up for review by the commission, the way I read it, will essentially kind of be tossed out if there's no new space, or if there's no space open for a new business, is that correct?
Yeah, so once all of the permits that are able to be issued, or once all the applicants have been reviewed in the qualified registration list, then staff will bring for council's approval to close the initial application phase, and if there are remaining applicants on that list, then they would be withdrawn and they could reapply under the next, the process described under subsection B of that same section.
So once the application phase is over, in this hypothetical, all the businesses are filled, application phase is over, those other applications at that point are gone?
Yes.
And then no one would have a reason to apply again until they know that there is an opening, correct?
They could reapply for their, their public safety application, and they can stay on the, the list for a year, as the code details, and then the chief would, would work with them to keep them renewed as they wish, or their, their application may expire if they don't maintain that. But they can be kind of in a waiting queue, as detailed-
And if they wanted to remain in queue while those other businesses are going on, they would just kind of re-up every year if they wanted to?
Correct.
Okay. Those are all my questions for now, thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions for staff, I'm going to open up the public portion of this hearing, and I do have some cards in, in front of me, and if anybody else who hasn't filled out a card yet wants to speak, please do that. See Matters?
Good evening, my name is Crystal Madder. Sorry, I was writing with a Sharpie, so I had to write it in big letters. It was a little bit easier to do it that way. I represent Adam Zollinger, who is an applicant for one of the retail use permits. Wanted to thank all of you, staff, and the Planning Commission and the city council. I've appeared before multiple city councils and commissions, and I can attest that what all of you have gone through with respect to the CUP permit process happens all over, no matter if it's a lottery process or a merit-based scoring process. The frustrations that all of you have felt in this process are echoed throughout the various constituencies in the state of California, and your, your diligence in working through this process doesn't go unnoticed or unacknowledged, so thank you. I wanted to let you know, I took a look at the text amendment, and I, really, just as a matter of transparency, I just wanted to make sure that no new requirements are being placed on the applicants. It appears to me, based on my review, that there are no new requirements, other than if something is deemed incomplete, then you have a certain amount of time to comply, but I just wanted that transparency if, if staff and the commission would, would be so kind to oblige me on that point. And also, I, I just wanted to tell you that we are very excited at the possibility for this text amendment to go before the city council for approval, and we're excited that if it's approved, that our application may begin to be processed by the city, and we are hopeful that we could, if approved, we could begin those tenant improvements and hopefully be in business by the end of the year so that we can serve the constituents of Pacifica and provide much-needed tax revenue. So really, I just wanted to introduce myself, ask that simple question, and also be available to answer any questions that you may have for me or for Adam. Thank you.
The next speaker is Brian Ca- Carin, Carina? I'm sorry.
Hello, thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for all of the new amendments that are being considered, and all of the time that you have spent creating the ordinance.
All right, so we're here to make some clarifications on the uses of alcohol. What we'd like to ask is if we could have the ability to use alcohol as a thermal carrier and not as a solvent. We're not going to be using alcohol to extract cannabinoids from any type of cannabis plants. What we're going to be doing is we're going to be using it to freeze the, the already extracted cannabinoids, and we need something that doesn't freeze, and alcohol will be the carrier for that, so we could, so we could separate the fat, yeah. So we're not looking to amend any of the ordinances to state that we could use alcohol or ethanol for an extraction process, because we're not going to be extracting any cannabinoids whatsoever. We're just going to be using it to put from one, one solid mass to a machine that will take it and distill the different cannabinoids based on their- to a machine that will take it and distill the different cannabinoids based on their weight. So it's not a, it's not extracting anything, it's just like separating it from its weight. So our ultimate goal is to make a consistent product, which is called distillate. We'd be looking to partner with a local company called Trip Distillery. What they do is they already manufacture and distill alcohol that we would be using in this process. So it's not a, a, something that we need to move forward with, to change any ordinance. We would just allow, you know, the safety, maybe a safety review of how to, how we would be using the alcohol in this process and see if it's okay with you guys to allow us to do that. So, and if, I have like one more minute, I could describe the process if you'd like or just say, you know, let you know that there would be no extractions done with the use of alcohol. It would already been extracted through the means of heat and pressure. And then also the alcohol would allow us to bring the temperatures down to a lower point below freezing to, so the fats would coagulate together and then just be filtered out that way.
And I want to make a point that the reason that we are bringing this up right now is because we are trying to create a full menu for a reputable brand that can create revenue for the city. So that's why I really want, we really want to emphasize that we will be separating fats from cannabinoids using alcohol.
So the extraction of the cannabinoid process is fully completed at this part. So there will be no extraction of cannabinoids with any type of solvents whatsoever. It'll just all be achieved through thermal, thermal means. But the alcohol will be used as a carrier to get the, the, the actual distillate, the, excuse me, the extract, the cannabinoids to another machine that would just like spin it and separate it. Rotovape is the proper term for that machine. And there would be no alcohol escaping in the air. We would be pulling our alcohol out of the crude in that machine and be placed back into the container. So there's no, nothing escaping. It's all contained. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to ask them a question?
Actually, I was, and maybe this is a question appropriately directed at the chief police and to staff. I, I'm not 100% sure, partly because my brain doesn't frankly work that way. I'm not 100% sure I understand the, sort of the science that's being described or the, or the technology that they're talking about. But I was curious about whether staff or the chief has a perspective on kind of the, the permissibility of this particular activity under the ordinance as currently drafted and is sought to be amended.
Denise Pizzano, Assistant City Attorney. If I may, Chair, I would recommend that if, through the chair, I'd request that Commissioner Niblin hold his question until after we've done public comment and then we can answer his question.
Okay.
Okay, well, again, it just, as long as it isn't going to be the case that we're going to need any further information from the folks who raised it in the first place. That's why I'm raising it now. I'm happy to hold my question, but just want to make sure that we have the right people at the dais to address it.
Okay, the next speaker is, thank you. The next speaker is Seaweed Holistic. Could you state your name for the record?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mr. Chair. Mr. Young here on behalf of Seaweed Holistics. My apology there, it's chaired by the wonderful attorney of Adam Zollinger. We had a marker there, so we were limited to the extent we could write. I stand before you, really echoing the comments of those before me, to say that before you tonight is what Seaweed Holistics believes, to be well-thought-out, reviewed regulations. Whenever our allies of the California Cannabis Industry Association have reached out to the city of Pacifica, city planning staff has always largely been available to answer questions. And we appreciate that because it takes understanding in order to truly meet the needs of any community. And Seaweed Holistics, our owner is Anna Leana Williams. She's here tonight. This is a woman-owned business and we're excited about that. We're excited about that just as we're excited to see that Commissioner Berman has been added to this dais because it ensures that a woman's voice has been added to the table of understanding and delivering on issues of importance when it comes to land use developments, issues. Mr. Chairman, Seaweed Holistics, as I shared, applauds the work. HDL Consultants is a statewide entity that has been contracted with many cities to roll out this cannabis program. HDL has shared that when it comes to two to three in a particular zone, Commissioner Biggs, it was a wonderful question that was posed as well as by Commissioner Niblin. We believe at Seaweed Holistics that we will provide a certain level of customer service, a certain level of product and a certain customer experience that will not be found at any other retailer in Rockaway Beach Plaza. Because our history has shown, and while there are questions related to it as a collective, that we met the needs of the Pacifica community through our products that were provided. And through our ongoing work with the city attorney's office, any past issues will continue to be resolved in a timely manner so that way we can move forward and hopefully secure findings of approval when it comes time for Seaweed Holistics to be reviewed and approved, hopefully by this commission. We thank you for each of your time. There are many questions. I believe that you have the right staff at the table to answer them. And no question is a bad question. We thank you for your time and we look forward and hope for approval of tonight's findings that have been requested by the city's mayor and city council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That everybody? That's that. That's that, that's that. That is, that is all the cards I had. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, if you could come on up and speak and then fill out a card and make sure that we get it.
Hello, my name is Patricia Batalia. I go by Trish. I'm a Pacifica resident. I've grown up in this town. And I stood up here a few months ago stressing to please reconsider adding manufacturing. I'm currently manufacturing in Oakland. I did try to do this in Pacifica. Unfortunately, it did not work out. I also have another manufacturing company, which is not cannabis. So I'm very aware of all the rules and regulations. I just was recently in Colorado touring edible manufacturing company, following their model for cannabis. The biggest issue I see is perception of cannabis. Dear Trish, I would like to thank you for accompanying me to cannabis club in Nevada City a couple of weeks ago. I have to admit, I would never have entered a club without someone knowledgeable being to guide, being able to guide me. My perception of a cannabis club is a dark room, salespeople with hoodies, dark sunglasses, a strong odor. To my surprise, I entered a brightly lit way. A security guard stationed behind the glass, a window, who asked for my driver's license. After the license was scanned and we entered the club through another door, I was a bit anxious. To my surprise, the room we entered was brightly lit with glass counters, products arranged as neatly as any expensive cosmetic counter. The salespeople were dressed professionally and to my surprise, two of them were women. They are friendly, they knew their products, my apprehension seemed to be obvious and they generally concerned about what products might work for their, for my issue. I paid for the healing solve and left there feeling welcomed and respected. Had I not had this first experience, I might not have never dreamed of entering a club. There was nobody hanging outside, there was plenty of parking. My sister is 70 years young and is currently using topical for chronic pain due to my suggestion. Okay, there are many benefits of cannabis. The most common use is chronic pain, cancer, ease nausea, epilepsy, lessens tremors and Parkinson's, glaucoma, Lou Gehrig's disease, Crohn's, IBS, depression, PTSD. I have many friends and family who have suffered from every one of these. I truly believe in cannabis. I've been doing it for many, many years. My grandparents also used it for solve. Pacifica needs to help these patients. The goal has always been to help the patient. I'm one of the faces of the manufacturing. I'm not somebody who you may have a preconception idea of who somebody looks like. Like I said earlier, I do have a cannabis company manufactured out of Oakland and I do have a regular manufacturing company in Redwood City. This city needs the money. If you open it up, it's just like a Starbucks. People are going to go to where they feel comfortable, what customer service or what they need. It's not about being afraid of not having extra clubs in the city or manufacturing. That's really ridiculous. People are not going to hang out in front of the clubs. They're going to be able to go in and out. Thank you. Please bring this back to Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you. And one more card is Archie Juden?
Good evening, everyone, fellow commissioners. I'm Archie Juden and I operate the Cannabis Wellness Center on Palmetto Avenue. We are not one of the recently permitted facilities for cannabis retail, but currently have been issued a license for Patient Resource Center and General Retail. We're still in the process of trying to obtain a dispensary license through the city, but are also evaluating alternative lines of business within the city. Our feasibility studies have identified over half a dozen delivery companies that are located outside of the city of Pacifica and advertise their services to local Pacificans. The state allows delivery companies to deliver throughout the state, which supersedes local jurisdiction. This is revenue streams being taken away from our city. Are we allowed to obtain a license to operate our services for delivery at our current property located on 2021 Palmetto Avenue? And also, we would like to request the commission's support to develop old communications with the city, creating a cannabis task force that would include city officials, local operators and community stakeholders to help regulate the rapidly changing dynamics, sorry, changing dynamics of the cannabis industry. This group would help the city continue to regulate cannabis activities, ensuring public, community and economics interests for the city of Pacifica. Programs can be implemented through this group, for example, Business Improvement District, to aid with beautification projects and community events. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my last card. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, I'm going to close, well, I'm not going to close it because you wanted to bring somebody back to.
Possibly so. I guess, again, if I could, I'll just go ahead and sort of restate what I think my question was. And it was that, in the context of receiving a public comment on this, there was a reference made to use of alcohol as a thermal carrier. I think that's a term that I heard a couple of times. And I'm not, I was just wondering what, I guess maybe at a high level, what state law says, if anything, about all that and what our local ordinance either is currently configured or as proposed to be amended says about, again, the use of alcohol as a thermal carrier. I don't know that we necessarily need to be in the business of giving legal advice per se, but I was curious about what our ordinance says, if anything.
Sure, so I might just offer a brief opinion on one aspect of that and then ask Mr. Cromarty to maybe offer his opinion on the same and then perhaps to speak more generally if he has knowledge about that particular manufacturing process or any other relevant aspect. I think as a general matter, staff in drafting this ordinance was most concerned with using solvents, whether volatile or non-volatile, for extraction purposes. However, on packet page 112 and going on to packet page 113, you'll see subsection T, the definition for non-volatile solvent. It reads, means any solvent used in the extraction process that is not a volatile solvent. For purposes of this article, a non-volatile solvent includes carbon dioxide, CO2, used for extraction and ethanol used for extraction or post-extraction processing. And so I think by that inclusion of post-extraction processing in relation to ethanol, it could prove problematic, as the proposed ordinance is written currently, to involve its use in the, in the manufacturing process. I don't know that I'm prepared to render or to offer an opinion with respect to whether this use could be conducted safely or appropriately, but perhaps Mr. Cromarty or others on the staff will have an opinion on that.
Thank you. To the best of my knowledge, state law is silent on the question of alcohol being used as part of the manufacturing process. It's not in the regulations currently and it's not in statute. However, ethanol is in part a form of alcohol extraction. My recommendation would be to allow staff and HDL to research the question, to table-making a decision on it this evening and allow staff and your consultant to research the matter and come back to you.
So that might constitute a further amendment at some juncture if we were going to tweak the language, for example, to exclude that particular use of ethanol or alcohol as, again, as sort of a, not as an extraction methodology, but in the post-extraction phase of things?
I believe that that's a fair assessment, yes.
Okay, well, that's certainly something, Mr. Chair, that I would be interested in directing. It sounds, again, I obviously want to make sure that, and I'd want people who are, you know, knowledgeable about the matter to sort of assess the safety aspects of it. But I think it warrants some further, some further analysis.
And I agree with, with that, that we do need, need to have the experts weigh in on this particular question.
And through the chair, it may help for our factual inquiry, if this matter is continued, to ask the public commenters to estimate the approximate volume of ethanol that they may be intending to use. Sometimes with respect to hazardous materials, the volume serves as an important threshold for, for safety and for other permitting requirements. And so if that's an option, that could be helpful for staff.
Commissioner Niblin?
Well, I was just wanting to dovetail on something that Mr. Murdock said and it might actually even be helpful to have something in writing from the folks who were, who'd raised the point or the, or the question or the interest so that we have some really clear understanding of what the proposal is and maybe what some of the background, you know, sort of technical, you know, sort of information is in the, in the area. I think that would be a useful thing for staff.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now I'm going to bring it back to the commission. So what does the commission wish to do?
I agree with Commissioner Niblin in that further research should be done regarding the use of ethanol for extraction.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree as well, so I'd be willing to make a motion for continuance.
Okay, and Commissioner Biggs?
I agree.
Would we need to continue the whole thing or would we need to just bring back that one segment?
Continue the whole thing?
Yeah, it would be our recommendation to continue the entire proposed ordinance. The commission needs to make its recommendation on the totality of the regulations. And so piecemealing would not be staff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much for that information. We have a motion?
I actually had one other thing. As long as we were going to continue it, Mr. Chair, I was hoping I could offer one other thought or observation. And that related to the parking, I know someone else had raised a comment about it. And I, you know, I really appreciated having the, the Ferrin Peers report. And it looked to me like the report basically came down, as sort of presented on the table here, sort of the notion of a, an assumption of one parking space for each 300 square feet of gross leasable space. Now, there was some language in the report that sort of suggested that this ought to be something that's monitored. And it just occurred to me, I'm curious about whether or not we couldn't perhaps consider baking into the regulations some, maybe some presumption or some minimum with, you know, perhaps staff in appropriate cases recommending a, sort of a more, sort of exacting parking standard in appropriate cases or if, as time goes by, if it turns out that the one space for 300 square feet is in some way inadequate, if it would be possible to bake into the ordinance code some flexibility so that that constituted a minimum rather than a, a per se number that could not be deviated from. It's something I'd like to suggest for staff to consider.
Certainly, we can evaluate how best to address that.
I was just going to add, the, the standard as it's written now or as it's proposed to be amended into the code would be considered a minimum.
Excellent, okay.
An applicant would be allowed to provide more parking than detailed in that, in that code.
I'm sort of more leaning towards perhaps a requirement in appropriate case.
Yeah, and it says, come up in prior applications and prior public hearings. In certain instances, the parking code as written as a general matter allows the commission to conclude a particular use as a high intensity use. That requires certain facts. That's why I mentioned we'll look at the best way to address that in a circumspect fashion when we come back, if this matter is continued.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Through the chair, we've had two additional, they're not new requests to speak, but folks who have spoken already have, have requested another opportunity. So that's, that's in your discretion, but I wanted to mention that.
They have spoken already. They've had their three minutes. And I did close the public hearing, correct? I think I'm not going to let them speak at this time.
Mr. Chair?
We have two lights here, which I think indicate that we're going to be continuing this item, and they'll be able to speak when it's brought back.
Or perhaps to provide written comments to staff subsequent to this hearing.
They can also provide written comments.
Chair, if the staff may have an opportunity before the commission proceeds to any action, there was a request for clarification from one of the speakers about potentially new requirements imposed on cannabis retail applicants. And Associate Planner O'Connor will just briefly outline our response to that.
Okay.
So the three that staff wanted to highlight were the addition of a new finding for a what is now, or what is proposed being referred to as a cannabis activity permit. There's a new finding that the Planning Commission would have to make in order to approve one of those permits. The parking standard is also a new requirement that would be imposed on the applications. However, and then additionally, with the amendments, extra time would be for the processing of these applications. Extra time would be permitted by allowing staff to do concurrent reviews of the public safety license and the cannabis activity permit concurrently. So that would change the process slightly, so.
Thank you very much for adding that. Hopefully, that answer is understood by the person who was asking the question. Okay. I believe Commissioner Big Stick was supposed to...
Yeah, I just had a very small, 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 on packet page 126, the one underlined X, or as the numeral intends at 10, very, very small, third line down, applicant or any of its principles to enforce the Pacifica Municipal Code. It's just a very slight dead S there. Thank you.
It's a typo, I guess. It should be ITS instead of IT.
Yeah, typo. Sorry. Thank you.
All righty. Okay. Commissioner Nebelen?
Well, absent any further comment or discussion, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to continue this matter to a date that would be recommended by staff in terms of having this matter brought back.
April 1st, please.
A motion to continue the matter to April 1st at our meeting at that time.
And Commissioner Big Stick?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Okay, we are now down to our last item. Let me get to the right page here first. This is a text amendment, TA 114-19, to amend Article 49 of the City of Pacifica. Oh, I'm reading the wrong one. It's on the other side. Excuse me. This is TA-115-19. It's a text amendment initiated by the City of Pacifica to amend existing zoning regulations in order to incorporate amendments to California's law related to accessory dwelling unit construction. Staff report, please.
Yes. Thank you, commissioners. Again, I am Associate Planner Bonnie O'Connor. In October 2017, the City Council adopted an ordinance to amend the Pacifica Municipal Code to be consistent with Section 65852.2 of the California Government Code pertaining to local regulation of an accessory dwelling unit or ADU construction as a result of amendments from Assembly Bill 2299 and Senate Bill 1069, which became effective January 1st, 2017. Also, in 2017, the California Legislature enacted Senate Bill 229 and Assembly Bill 494, which further amended the government code pertaining to local regulation of ADUs and became effective in January 2018. The proposed amendments included in tonight's staff report are intended to incorporate changes associated with Senate Bill 229 and Assembly Bill 494. These amendments, along with other changes, address the following. They allow an ADU to be created on sites that include both, include a proposed attached or detached single-family dwelling. It defines the term tandem parking. It reduces the maximum number of parking spaces which may be required for an ADU to one space, requires special districts and water corporations to charge a proportional fee schedule, scale based on an ADU's size or its number of plumbing fixtures, and authorizes the Department of Housing and Community Development to review and comment on ADU ordinances. As further detailed in the staff report, the parking requirements for an ADU have been changed. Assembly Bill 494 amended the parking requirements for an ADU not to exceed one parking space per unit or per bedroom, whichever is less. This language leaves some ambiguity, thank you, for studios, for studio ADUs, as they could be considered to have zero bedrooms or alternatively be considered a bedroom which contains other functions. Without the benefit of a definition of a bedroom in our zoning code, the general consideration that a studio is considered not to have a bedroom under the city's existing zoning standards and recognizing that the general intent of the legislative amendment is to remove barriers for the creation of ADU, staff's interpretation is that the proposed studio ADUs would not require parking. Likewise, Senate Bill 229 amended the language in the Government Code Section 65852.2, which prohibits local agencies from requiring parking for an ADU that is part of the proposed or existing primary residence or an accessory structure. Again, this language leaves some ambiguity. Oh, my God. Thank you. What defines part of? And because of the general intent, these state legislative amendments, it is reasonable for staff to conclude that this amendment would prevent the city from requiring parking for attached ADUs as described in Pacifica Municipal Code Section 9-4.453 Subsection D, since these ADUs are structurally part of the proposed or existing single-family dwelling. Therefore, under these amendments, attached ADUs would be added to the category of ADUs described in Pacifica Municipal Code Section 9-4.453E, which are ADUs contained within existing space of a single-family residence or accessory structure as not requiring parking. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to help answer questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Big Stick?
I have far fewer questions this time. And everything seemed to be about parking. So my understanding was pretty much the off-street parking is one if there's any bedroom at all. If they have more than two bedrooms, then perhaps there could be more than one off-street parking spot.
Not under the proposed amendments. It would max out at one parking spot.
I think I was reading on page 203, F1, and I'm sure I just misread whatever it is I thought I read. So if you could just help me clarify that.
Oh, that is the attachment C, which is 203, on page 203, is the existing.
Okay, so that's what we're transitioning from?
Yeah.
Makes perfect sense.
Chair, if I may, Senior Planner Murdock, as a practical matter, significant portions of the city already do not require parking for accessory dwelling units on account of their proximity to public transit. And so I don't believe we included the maps this evening because they really weren't, you know, immediately relevant to the discussion we were having. But just if I could describe it, significant portions within a half a mile of Highway 1, for example, and other portions of the city where there's regular daily bus service are exempt from providing parking for any type of ADU. And so while it's important to discuss it, I just think it's important as well for the commission to understand the practical effect, is that most ADUs proposed in the city aren't required to provide parking.
That was my understanding. Thank you. The other question being, if a garage is converted into an ADU, it sounds like those two spots do need to be incorporated somewhere else on the property. Is that correct?
If that conversion occurs within a half mile of a transit stop, that would then require the primary dwelling unit parkings to be recreated somewhere else on the site.
So they have to be further than a bus stop in order for them to have to provide off-street parking if they convert their garage into an ADU?
The important distinction is that if you convert your garage, which provides the off-street parking for the primary unit, in all instances, our ordinance requires you to replace the parking on site.
You have to replace it.
For sites beyond a half a mile, they are allowed to provide those spaces in any configuration on the site.
Right.
For those locations within a half a mile of transit or which are otherwise exempt from providing off-street parking, the garage spaces must be replaced as a garage on the site. So the spaces as spaces must be replaced in all instances. Where you're already not providing parking for the ADU, you must replace the garage.
So it has to be an actual garage?
That's correct.
Ah, okay. Thank you very much. Oh, my other question, just, can you just briefly tell me what an efficiency unit is? I was reading that a bunch, and I, either I passed it up in my brain or I didn't see the definition as I was going, just briefly.
It would take a moment for us to pull up the health and safety code, but in effect, an efficiency unit is one that falls below the typical threshold for a dwelling unit. I believe it may be allowed to be as small as 150 square feet in some instances. And so, as the name suggests, it's the bare minimum to safely have a habitable sleeping space. It also has limited kitchen facilities in some instances, perhaps not a full stove and range, for example, but some implement to cook food. And then it also has hygiene facilities, such as a bathroom and a shower. The bathroom and shower may be combined into a single room. And so there are a lot of economies or efficiencies in the construction of that unit, intended to make the best use of space and/or to lower the cost of provision of the unit.
So I did read it, and it is in here, and my brain just didn't connect it as I would have hoped it had, but now it has, and thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public portion of this meeting. And Kevin Casey.
Thank you, Commissioner Clifford. I'm generally in favor of additional dwelling units. I do have a couple of quick questions. In San Francisco, they've been adding a lot of them, and what they've been doing is adding them onto apartment buildings with no limits. Don't know what Pacifica's planning on doing with that range. The other one I want to make sure to understand is that, as I understand, Pacifica will not allow Airbnb use of an additional dwelling unit. I just want to confirm that that is the case, because I believe these should only be used for housing. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Could staff answer those two questions for...
So the language does require that the rental terms of the ADU be at least 30 days, so it's not allowing for the short-term rentals. In terms of the number of ADUs that are permitted on a site, it's one per site. And the property needs to have a proposed or an existing single-family home. So would it be on a property that already contains a multi-unit development?
Thank you very much for those answers. I'm sure that Kevin will appreciate them. Okay. Oops. Commissioner Nebelen?
I'm sorry, may I have gotten ahead of you? Did you bring it back to...
I hadn't quite got there, but I am now closing the public hearing and bringing it back to the commission.
Thank you. And I was just going to share my reflections at this point. You know, my own, I think last time we had this before us, I know there were a diversity of views. And my own personal perspective is that, you know, given the times we live in and sort of the challenges we have around housing, particularly housing that's affordable or naturally affordable, you know, I'm generally in favor of things that, like ADUs, as ways of addressing, as ways of addressing the significant shortage we have between jobs and housing. I think that, you know, most of what we're talking about doing here is, frankly, required anyway to bring our ordinance code into conformity with state law. So I don't believe that there's an awful lot of discretion in any event when you get right down to it. Having said all that, I'd be in support of these changes in any event as ways of getting us incrementally closer to making these forms of development feasible and attractive.
Thank you very much for that. Any other comments or motions? Commissioner Big Stick?
That was very well stated. I agree entirely, and I'm ready to make a motion when appropriate to do so.
Go for it.
Cool. In that case, I move that the Planning Commission finds that the proposed ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, adopts the resolution, include as attachment A to the staff report to initiate the text amendment, and recommend approval to the city council, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Ah, Commissioner Kreske?
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Okay. Now on to considerations items, which there are none, and communications, Commissioner Communications. Commissioner Kreske? No, that was just the last light. Anybody else want to make? Ah, Commissioner Nebelen?
Again, I just wanted to apologize for my late arrival, and I just wanted to welcome the new commissioners. I haven't had a chance, well, met at least one of you before, and just wanted to welcome the new commissioners, Commissioner Berman and Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm also going to take this opportunity to officially welcome Commissioner Berman and Commissioner Big Stick. And I'm also going to take a moment to thank Commissioner Josh Gordon for the many years that he put in with the commission. He selfishly worked for at least a decade here, so I want to make sure that that was noted.
Through the chair, with the commission's permission, I wanted to offer, given his long tenure, to prepare a resolution, you know, acknowledging him from the Planning Commission, and we can welcome him back at a future date to receive the resolution.
Certainly sounds good to me.
Great idea.
Or proclamation, I guess, is probably the right term. So if you guys have any funny stories or anything you need me to do, please forward them on.
Things that we want in the public record?
Your warehouse closet. You can come up with one. Yeah, nice.
Okay. Any more commission communications? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to staff communications.
With that, we just have one that Christian's going to give about Home for All.
Thank you, Tina. You may have heard by now, and if you haven't, I'm providing a brief description about a very important community engagement effort the city's undertaking. It's a countywide program sponsored by the San Mateo County Manager's Office. It's called Home for All, and the City of Pacifica is fortunate to have been selected for this year's program. Last year was the first year, and there was a pilot program. We are one of several cities in San Mateo County that is undertaking this process this year. We have branded it Pacifica Connects. We really hope that this is an opportunity for neighbors and residents of all walks of life to connect with one another, to talk about housing. We know housing is really the pressing issue of our day in this region, and certainly no less in San Mateo County and Pacifica. And to that end, we are having a community conversation on Saturday, April 13th, at the Pacifica Community Center. The doors open at 9:30 in the morning. We are providing breakfast so folks can fill up their tummies and have no excuse not to come because they're hungry. Also, no excuse not to come if you have children. We are providing childcare for children ages three and up. And so we really want everybody to feel welcome. It's not a policy debate. There's not a three-minute comment period where people are going to, you know, share their strong opinions on one side or the other. their strong opinions on one side or the other. Everyone will be, you know, divided at small tables and having intimate conversations with their neighbors, as it should be, about how the housing situation has affected them for better or for worse, you know, on all aspects of the issue. We encourage everybody and anybody that's interested to register. You can access more information on the city's website at citypacifica.org/pacificaconects. At that link, you'll see a brief, a brief informational item, and there are additional links to the city's Eventbrite page where you can RSVP. It's important to us to have an RSVP so we can estimate the number, but more importantly, to get an estimate for the number of people that need childcare, whether they need any disability accommodations that would enable them to attend the meeting, as well as any non-English languages that we ought to support to help everybody have a chance to participate in the conversation. And so if folks don't remember the link or whatever I just shared, they're welcome to call the Planning Department and ask for Christian. I'm happy to take those calls and to make sure folks are informed and to help us get the word out, to make it a really beneficial community conversation.
Thank you, Christian. Okay, we've reached that portion of the meeting. Ah, Commissioner Nebelen?
I'll move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second for that?
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
It was Tuesday. Could you vote again, please?
Yay. We are adjourned.
Well done. I'm John Nebelen.
More in German. Nice to meet you.
Good to see you. Good to see you.